Yes ma'am. Welcome to tonight's meeting. I know we're first gonna look to Mr. Baker. We have some questions to get answered before we go into our regular meeting.
Betcha, and these are for 10E. And it's about the flood project between us and the flood management. And it metamorphosed dramatically from the original with $100,000 to design and 250 to instruct. So my question, and I guess we've been messing this with this since 2014?
I don't know the history on it, Counselor, but yeah, but I'll certainly pass it to Community Development Director Downing.
Sure. Dave Downing, Director of Community Development. So the mayor will attest that almost all of our projects in partnership with the Mile High Flood District are set up on a basis where the contract anticipates for at least the first couple of years and not longer periodic contributions from each party simply to accrue money. The original contract defined very generally a scope of the project is the entire Shaw Heights Tributary, which starts at Lowell Boulevard and runs all the way down to Wolf Run Park where it intersects Little Dry Creek. The intent of the project is to identify segments of improvement, necessary improvements within that entire reach. So it's a big project. It's likely that several segments will be identified. It's likely that if the district and the city decide to provide improvements at every one of those segments, it'll be multimillion dollar project. So the original contract, which I think was $175,000 each, and this proposed amendment, which is 225, those figures had nothing to do with any specific item of cost. We're simply accruing money because we know we're going to need at least, what is it, $800,000 when you add that up? At least that much, likely quite a bit more. Now, I did ask my Stormwater Administrator today, with this First Amendment, will we have enough accrued to at least do the floodplain analysis? And he said, yes, this will be more than enough to do that. I don't know what the specific cost for the floodplain analysis will be, but it'll be less than $800,000. But you can likely expect, unless council decides that there's a better use of stormwater utility funds elsewhere, you can expect annual request for amendments to the contract to continue to accrue funds during the floodplain analysis and preliminary design work. We'll start to get a handle on construction costs for those various segments that might be necessary. And we can continue each year. We can skip a year if we find that maybe more money in the stormwater utility is needed for isolated small projects that are not on major drainage ways, meaning not in partnership with the Mile High Flood District. And we'll just keep going as long as council thinks that this is the best use of stormwater utility money. We have prepared a master plan in the past that shows that this is our top priority, working, doing work along the Shaw Heights Tributary. So trying to find a match between the contribution amounts and some specific item of cost is not pertinent. We're not trying to match any particular cost right now.
So it isn't like this, you had a plan to begin with, and then this grew out of hand. You said you had, and see, because I think I read somewhere, part of it had to do with the widening of US 36.
Probably, yes, sir. I don't remember reading that, but there are various occurrences that have happened over the past many years to cause the drainage characteristics to change within the basin. And that's why we're wanting to do an up-to-date analysis of what the effects those changes may have caused, how the increased runoff is affecting us. We know right now, just from observation, that probably the highest priority area is the back parking lot of the Upper Wood Apartments. I used to know them as the Sandpiper Apartments, the one that runned out on Sheridan at about 84th somewhere in that vicinity. The Shaw Heights Tributary actually crosses diagonally across that back parking lot in a pipe that's undersized now. And so there's several feet of water during a major event in that back parking lot. So we know that's one priority, and the analysis will tell us what other priorities we might have.
And, okay, the Uplands is going to increase the flow down the whole length of the channel because they're gonna have, what, you know, 30%, 40% impervious surface?
Yeah.
So Uplands... Now, they have a retention, no, a detention pond. It's still gonna have a significant increase in the stormwater runoff.
In the volume of runoff, yes. Basically, the purpose of a detention pond is to detain the water, to release it at the historic rate. Naturally, the volume will be greater, so it's over, it'll runoff over a longer period of time. But you're correct, the far upstream end of the Shaw Heights Tributary is the Uplands development. Uplands is paying the total cost of any kind of analysis, design work, and construction from the outlet of the detention pond that will be on the upstream or west side of Lowell, down Shaw Boulevard to Circle Drive. There's a significant inlet, sized inlet at Circle Drive and past, and when I say past, I may be going back as far as the 1990s, projects have installed, city and urban drainage projects have installed a large-sized pipe from that point down to Rotary Park, which is on the upstream side of US 36. And all of the parties, Mile High Flood District, city staff, and the Uplands folks have determined that inlet at Circle Drive can be considered to be the safe outfall point for their runoff. So Uplands will be paying that entire cost. I don't know what it is, but it's certainly hundreds of thousands of dollars and might be more into seven figures to build that storm drainage outfall between those two points. And we all feel safe that once it reaches that inlet, that's the point where there will be no impact from the upstream runoff.
So it's going to be underground because now, I guess, it's just surface drainage down Shaw Boulevard?
Correct, yeah. Most, yeah, you use the street as your stormwater conveyance system as long as it's, doesn't, isn't oversized, the runoff isn't too large for the street to be the conveyance system. They will definitely be putting in a pipe because of the, because of the, the street just is, right now, isn't sized properly to carry the historic runoff from Uplands. They're actually going to be improving the overall system. They're gonna be, Uplands will be putting in improvements that are greater than necessary just to convey their runoff. That's by agreement with all the parties.
And from 80th South, it's all just an open creek. Is anything gonna have to be done to that?
Don't know yet. The analysis will tell us, that's a very deep channel there, I remember, because I worked on part of it several years ago. So we'll just have to see if it's sized properly or not. It's probably, it's probably a bigger problem as you get closer to Wolf Run Park because the channel isn't nearly as well-defined in Wolf Run Park as it is just south of 80th.
Right. And there isn't any room between the railroad tracks and the backyards of the people?
It was tight back then. You should've seen how bad it was trying to get big backhoes in, back when we did it back in the 90s, I guess it was.
Okay. I think you've answered my questions.
Okay.
Bruce, just to help you, almost everything in urban drainage isn't done in one. It takes several years. They've got a five-year plan where Westminster has a piece of the pie for the budget, and every other city, it is probably the best well-run group I've ever seen. They're fair. If it doesn't cost as much, you don't pay it. They match us, they sometimes pay more. It's just, they're getting their funds, they use our funds as other cities, and, well, we've got many, many places here in the city that have avoided great flooding because of how they do it, and they love making it so that people can use it when it's underwater or in a bad storm. So they really do try to make it beautiful. I've gone on several tours in other parts of the metro area, and I just think they do great work.
Who actually holds the funds?
Most of the time, including this case, they hold the money, they're the contracting agent.
So they basically put it in like an escrow account?
Yes, sir. And they, they become the contracting agency with any contractors or consultants that we have.
And every month, the board members see what's coming out, what's going in, and what projects are being taken care of. And then there's, sometimes there's something where a city's not ready for whatever reason because of what they're doing, and they need to come and say, we're not ready for this. And so then they look at how much this was gonna be, and if there's another project on the upcoming list that can leave for a year and get something done, and then this one goes into the next year. So they're very accommodating.
I might point out, the Little Dry Creek in the city was improved, you know, it was just a, I mean, it was just a badly undersized little creek. It was a 17-year project for me. Not every seven, every one of those 17 years, like you said, sometimes we had to skip a year or two to wait for funding, but it took 17 years to improve Little Dry Creek.
And trust me, they know who's got, given what, where it is on the books. I just applaud them. I wish every organization could run like them.
And so we don't even know, like, any time to start of this project. It could be four years away.
Construction could be, could be. It'll, the analysis that we can start now will identify priorities for us, give us some preliminary costs, and then it'll just be a matter of, you know, do we, do we want to do priority job number one? Well, we might have to wait for another year to accrue enough to pay for the construction. Or do we want to do a lesser priority because we have the money that we could do that right now? We'll just make those decisions as we get more information from the analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have questions on the agenda? If not, do you have council reports? Ms. Simons?
Wyatt Baker last week.
Nope, but just appreciate Counselor Seymour for covering me for North Metro Arts Alliance on Thursday.
Get that link, so thank you.
Counselor Baker, anything more? I'll turn the mail.
I just remembered, I probably didn't, because I wasn't here last week, but I'll come with my notes from Dr. Cog from the week prior. Sorry about that.
And some of us went to the Mong Festival on Saturday. It was fantastic, great people, and I already told the chief, I did our recruiting for, for officers, and Thornton Police Chief was there after me, and he said, I knew I was coming to counteract that Westminster, that I knew they were gonna be trying to recruit. But told the kids, there were so many kids, I wanted them to know about our yappers and how they could sign up to be with part of that group, and I told them about the fire academy, the police academy, the teen academy, so it was a great crowd, so I hope, I hope we get some folks. Okay, we'll see everybody in there at 7:00.
Usually it's fun to work.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of November 28, 2022. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. Just to remind everyone, our rules governing decorum and safety. We do have public comment period up to five minutes. When you hit that five minutes, I will gently remind you your time is up. Disruptions are prohibited and any talking or whispering, please go out into the hallway because we can hear you and it's distracting. No threats or intimidation will be allowed. Signs are prohibited and during a council meeting, council members shall endeavor to refrain from electronic communication on subjects at the meeting. With that, could we have roll call, please?
Councilor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protam Demat.
Present.
Councilor Emmons.
Present.
Councilor Azadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Councilor Normella.
Here.
And Councilor Seymour.
Here.
That brings us to motion for minutes of November 14th. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the November 14, 2022 meeting as presented.
Councilor Seymour.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the minutes from November 14, 2022. Does anybody have any changes? Councilor Azadi.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a correction for a part of that section. So Alan Farb's statements should be corrected to say, to reflect, to better reflect what he had gave in his public comments, and it should be corrected to say, Mr. Farb noted that the city's continuum of compassion regarding its homeless residents doesn't reflect the realities he sees.
I would, if that's a friendly amendment, I would accept that.
Then the motion is to approve with the 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 changes that have been made, the corrections, I'm sorry. So with that, I will ask for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to presentations, and would Russell Sanders, please join me up front, and anyone from the Historical Society?
Oh, it's great to see everybody. I'm going to give you a microphone to pass. Tell us who you are.
I'm Bob Grabiel. I'm a Gary Shea, board member of the Westminster Historical Society.
And Grabiel, President of the Historical Society, Kathy Pascoe.
This is Russ, Mr. Sanders. Whereas, we have a proclamation for you tonight, and you have been this for a long time, and I had no idea how long. Yes, whereas Mr. Sanders in 1978 applied with the City of Westminster for a position on the volunteer fire department. He retired after 20 years of volunteer service in 1998, whereas one of his first duty days as a probationary firefighter, the regular volunteer who normally played Santa. Mr. Sanders' training, Officer Ed Atkins told him to put on the suit and get on the fire engine. This began a long holiday tradition that Mr. Sanders has looked forward to each and every year, and where Mr. Sanders, for over 41 years, has helped the City of Westminster at many holiday events in the role of Santa. Is very proud that he never missed a single year serving in this important role of bringing holiday cheer. His many visits included the annual hometown Christmas and the City of Westminster's annual city hall tree lighting. And now therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim appreciation to Russell Sanders for his 41 years of service to the City of Westminster as a volunteer firefighter and Santa, and call upon the people of Westminster to recognize Russell Sanders and other volunteer firefighters for their significant dedicated service and contribution to our community.
Thank you to my, my family, at least part of my family out there, who has supported me and encouraged me over the 41 years. I'd like to thank city council and Mayor McNally for this honor. It truly is an honor.
Well, let me share on Friday night, hopefully not bad snow, so that you can come down to Historic Westminster at Station One, which is just a little east of 73rd and Bradburn. We will be lighting the tallest in the whole state, and with Gary Shea's help today, he rounded up the troops and we know park rangers and firefighters were decorating it today ahead of the snow tonight. So it is ready to plug in, and Mr. Sanders will be the person that gets to light that tree and have an angel with his name on it at, at the site. So the Historical Society does this every year. We had to cancel last year because of COVID and everything, so thank you for being patient and waiting. And I'm going to ask Ms. Grabiel if she has also something.
Yes, we have something special from the Historical Society to our new city manager, and so this is so you can know what we know. Enjoy, and I hope you like, Mr. Baker, he's wonderful. He's dead, but he's wonderful.
So 6:30 at the Station One, we'll have carolers, we'll have the tree lighting. Be arranged so you can get warm, and there will be hot chocolate and hot dogs with scouts, so a fun night. So please come down, and I hope we see you, and thank you again, Mr. Sanders. It was great to meet you in person. And thanks to his family for 41 years.
That brings us to public comment. Please remember to state your name, and if you are a resident, do we have people signed up?
We do. We have two people signed up. The first speaker is Britt Terry.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Britt Terry. I used to be a member of the Westminster community, lived over in countryside for 26 years, I believe. Kids all went through the schools here. I live in Erie now. I kind of got on board and started this Friends of Stanley Lake thing when the lake was so rushedly shut down. It's hard to remember, 2019, 2018. And then, you know, I was on the, I was on the tagging committee, very active, pulling people together, trying to work with the city management at the time, with the water quality management at the time. So Friends of Stanley Lake, these stupid orange sweatshirts, this is the last one I got. I work on it in the garage, as you can see. Normally, this was my best come-to Monday night meeting outfit. I just, I've heard a lot of very good news in the last couple of weeks that have been brought before the council. Super happy to hear that. To me, it's a glimmer of hope, and I hope that we can build on this and maybe take it to a bigger glimmer. The public outcry when the lake was closed in a rapid, in a rapid, kind of knee-jerk fashion, I think was well deserved, honestly. There were thousands of people that used that lake for many, many years, and the rug was just yanked out from underneath them. I will tell you sadly that a bunch of the people that were on the Friends of Stanley Lake kind of original meeting crew moved. They're gone, half of them. Don't even live in Westminster. These people are passionate about boating, passionate about water quality, passionate about sharing resources. And I really think that, that there is an opportunity, if, if the council and the, and the city management now wanted to reopen what we were doing. I really think there was some personal animosity with some of the old city management, some of the water quality people, those people are gone. We've worked and worked tirelessly for months and months to try and make a system that would work, and at the end of the day, there were two people that had the biggest votes in the city were absolutely not having a single yes answer out of anything. They sent their own people to our committees to try and work. They weren't there to work. They were there to check the box saying, we're not ever going to let boats back on that lake. I think that was sad. I poured a ton of time in that, as did many other people. I think we were very close to having some solutions. We had multi-layered solutions. It could have been 10 times better or 100 times better than what had been being done, which in my estimation was pretty sloppy for a lot of years. Never got any muscles in those years, thank God, but I think we could do it a whole lot better. Westminster could be a model ANZ lake in the whole state of Colorado, if not in the whole United States, and in places that are trying to keep ANZs out. There is no trading places between water quality and sharing the lake, right? There is an acceptable set of risks. You've got to be willing to take those. You've got to do everything you can to minimize that risk absolutely as low as you can get it. But right now, with paddleboards, you have risk on that lake. With run-in coming from different sources outside the lake, you have risk, okay? We've got to accept that in life there are risks. What you do is try and mitigate that risk down to an acceptable, an acceptable state. I really think that we were pretty close with open-minded people trying to work on that to be able to get to a situation where maybe the city management might have been able to say, you know, I'm pretty comfortable with this. Let's run it by some other cities. Let's run it by, I think, where the IGA is. There's an opportunity for that to happen, but you've got to pull open-minded people together. I love the fact that you guys have hired Elizabeth Brown, one of the best ANZ people in the, in the country. She's working now on your behalf, and she gave you guys an update at, at the last meeting. But there isn't a trade between safety, water quality, any of those. There is a trade, though, when nobody uses the lake and some people are kind of walled out. That's a public resource, should be shared safely amongst all. Really passionate about that. I really think there's a way forward. I'm here to tell you that I think there's a way forward. I think if they were open to council, to city management, whatever, somebody ring me up. I can, I can bring some troops together. We'll get the band together. We'll plan to do all Monday nights or, or whatever night we pick. And I think that there really could be a happy ending up there at Stanley Lake. Wonderful lake. I drive by that thing all the time, and it makes me sad. It shouldn't make me sad. It should make me laugh. It should make you happy. I wish he was doing that to the thousands and thousands of people that use that lake for so many years. With that, I really appreciate the chance to come speak. Lot of new faces, lot of old faces, and, and thank you a lot.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Terry Lancy.
Welcome, and pull the microphone way down for you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a minute tonight to share my thoughts on the lake. I have so much to say, but I will keep it short. My family and I boated at Stanley Lake for over five years before it was shut down. We really miss the quality time spent with family on the water. And now having two grandsons, I would love to be able to bring them now. I hope you take into consideration reopening the lake. The task force and Friends of Stanley Lake, especially Britt, worked hard to come up with a system to make this work. I think you will find a group of boaters who are more than willing to work together to come up with a solution. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's the last person we had signed up.
And we didn't have any voicemails?
No voicemails.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to our city managers' report. I'm sorry, I should ask if anybody didn't get signed up. Please come forward, give your name, and if you're a resident, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, and nice to meet you, city manager. My name's Craig Russell. I am a resident of Westminster. I've been here. I started buying properties here in 1983. Have owned several properties, and I'm here to talk to you again about the systematic rental inspection program that we have here. As I've said the entire time this council's been here, which has now been a year, I feel it's not only discriminatory, I also feel that it's illegal. I feel it infringes on our Fourth Amendment right, and I'd like it to be addressed. Now, I understand the council has a lot of important things to do, and I'm glad that, that they do give out proclamations and honor pins and stuff like that, but it's been a year. This has not been addressed. Most of you put in an oath that you would uphold the Constitution of the United States, but I do not believe it's being upheld, to be honest with you. And since it's been brought to your attention over a year ago, I would at least implore you to take a look at it and see if it actually is being upheld. I'm also a little upset because in the beginning of September, I was threatened by one of your employees. Your lead housing inspector called me up on the phone and said, we are going to put liens against all of your properties because you have failed to pay for the inspection fees. I told her I hadn't failed to pay for it, but thank you very much. I called Mr. Horace, and he reiterated the fact that they're not going to put liens against my property because they had been paid two years prior, and the inspections had never been done. He said in a study council session that no inspection will be charged again until the previous inspection that has been paid for has been done. But that's water under the bridge. The inspections have been done. I do feel that, that we're having another issue here. I think it's gone from a professional into more of a personal vendetta because I'm up here complaining about it. I'm up here bringing light to the subject. I don't think that it's the council's intent or anybody's intent to actually nitpick about any possible little thing that you can find as a possible violation. Again, they're nitpicking that there is dirt on the property, and that's apparently illegal. I also received from the City of Westminster through the Water Department several, a couple of years ago, a brochure that said that City of Westminster would like us to conserve energy. They would like us to put in LED light bulbs. They would like us to put in variators and low-flow taps for showerheads and stuff like that to conserve water. Also to put blankets on the water heaters to help to conserve the energy there as well. I didn't realize when we did all of those things to all of our apartments, that we would come back and be in violation of the city's Westminster code, that you can't have a blanket on your water heater because they can't see the tag now. And so the inspector has said, and I have it in writing, that all the blankets need to be removed from the water heaters so they can see the tags. I told them if they wanted to go ahead and take them off and replace them at their expense, they were more than welcome to do so. We put them on. They've been on. The water heaters have been there for years. I don't see the scene, the tags. I don't see the scene, the tags are that important. On that kind of same stuff, we've had smoke detectors hanging in the same building for a long period of time. It's passed every year before, but now all of a sudden, oh, we have to move the smoke detectors. They even sent me a copy of the manufacturer's recommendation, which we looked at. The manufacturer's recommendations don't say that we have to move them, but your lead inspector does. We seem to have a conflict here. And again, I think it's gotten to the point that, you know, where they're going to nitpick on absolutely every little thing that you can imagine, it's a little out of hand. Just wanted to bring this to your attention. I'm hoping that it's been a year for some of you that have signed up for two years, halfway through it, that we will finally take the time to address some of these problems that we're having. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that didn't get signed up? And Mr. Frytag, somebody will get ahold of this gentleman and, okay, thanks. City manager's report. Oh, sorry, didn't see it. Welcome.
Good evening. I'd like to take a few minutes, or my name's John Palmer, by the way. I'd like to take a few minutes and address the Holt's Claw Homestead demolition that happened two weeks ago. Glad to see that happen. I understand the reasons why. Now, I'd like an explanation why that looks like the new Westminster city dump over there. Why is it, it wasn't cleaned up when the demolition was done and why it's now been two weeks and it still looks like the city dump with the trees, all the debris from the houses, kind of an eyesore, kind of a bad optics, I would say. Sheridan's a very busy street. A lot of people drive up and down it. They see that daily. What kind of impression does that leave on the citizens of this, of this town, this city? Like I said, it looks like a new city dump. The debris's within yards of Sheridan, the fence line, just optically, it doesn't look good. Drive by tomorrow and look at it and see what you think. Is that what you want our city to be represented as? I ask. I'd like to see if we can't get that remedied in a timely fashion. Like I say, it's been two weeks since the demolition was completed. I think that's more than sufficient time to have got it cleaned up or why that wasn't part of the contract with the demolition. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone else? City manager Frytag, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, I do. And Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, ladies and gentlemen that are in attendance, those that are watching from their homes, wanted to provide a quick update on what's going on in the city. And so, one of the things that I asked for based upon the comments that were made last meeting was some concerns about how the city is addressing homelessness in our community. And I just wanted to provide what our current six-month tally is from January to June. We'll update this here at the end of the year, but we do have city navigators that are out helping the homeless in our community. They're helping people find housing. They're helping folks with services like obtaining identification documents, et cetera. We've got folks being helped with transportation assistance, and the list goes on. And so, we do track that, we monitor it, we work it hard. Is it ever going to be perfect? Absolutely not. I wish it was, but we're working it to the best of our abilities. And so, we'll provide an update here at year-end closeout. Next slide, please. The other thing that I mentioned last meeting was that we were going to be doing here on Tuesday, the Sheridan Underpass installation. And given the weather that's projected for tonight into tomorrow morning, that will be delayed until Wednesday, November thirtieth. Wanted the community to be aware of that. And then, to the Holt's Claw Homestead, you know, Mr. Palmer spoke to the unsightly mess that remains, and, you know, I certainly agree. I drove by it this weekend. And so, we've got some work to do there, but a good news story because we had a site that was attracting bad things happening. We got that site cleaned up. You can see some of the pictures at the bottom of the screen, working between the city and the property owner, and we'll continue to work that, but still have some cleanup to do. So, we certainly acknowledge that. Next slide. Wanted to just talk about a Westy win. This was news to me. I didn't realize that the city did this, but I think it's a great program. The city offers a bilingual merit pay program. That program continues to grow, and what the bullets there are going to tell you is that for the 2022-2023 bilingual merit pay program, we just completed some testing. Tested twenty-six applicants from our city workforce, the largest group of applicants that the city has had since the inception of the program. In 2001, we've got twenty-four participants who will help interpret in the Spanish language, one in the Mongol language, and one in American sign language. So, that, what that means is, is we have fifty bilingual or multilingual employees across the organization. And I think that's a great step forward to being a, you know, a community that's responsive to a diverse community. And so, I was very excited to learn about that. Next slide. And then, just some things to know. Fire Department Holiday Charity Drive going on from November twenty-first to December sixteenth. Anybody that has donations of food, toys, clothes, you can drop them off at city facilities in several community locations. And these donations will help support Have a Heart Project, the Jeffco Foster Care, Santa Cops, and the Fish Food Bank of Westminster. So, an opportunity to contribute and give back to the community, those that might be less fortunate. Environmental Advisory Board meeting, that's Wednesday this week, six-thirty to eight PM in the City Hall, City Manager's Office, Boardroom upstairs. Hometown Christmas in Historic Westminster, talked about that earlier this evening, but that's Friday, December second, at six-thirty PM. And that's at Fireman's Park, down next to Fire Station Number One. Holiday lighting ceremony, if you haven't checked out outside, pretty impressive with all of the lights. Decorations is going to be a great event. That's Saturday, December third, at five-thirty PM. Encourage folks to come out and participate. And then, our next City Council Study Session is Monday, December fifth, at six-thirty, right here in Council Chamber. So, pending any questions, that's all I have for an update, and then I'll, I'll push us to contact us. You know, if you've got, you want to reach out, you want to talk to the city, please reach out and talk to us. Give us a phone call at six-five-eight-two-zero-zero-six. You can email me directly at mfraytag@cityofwestminster.us. You can follow us on Twitter. You can like us on Facebook. Check us out on Instagram. You can connect with us on Nextdoor. Lots of ways to interact with the city. Certainly encourage you to do that. Next slide. And as we wrap up, we have two information items that are available for the City Council's consideration. One of those is the monthly workforce report, and the other is the city council's plan update. Any questions? That's all I have this evening.
Any questions from council tonight? Thank you. That brings us to City Council comments. Seen none. That moves us to Consent Agenda, Items Eight-A through C. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Consent Agenda Items Eight-A through Eight-C.
Counselor Emmons, second. Been moved and seconded to adopt Consent Agenda Items Eight-A through C. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
Thank you. That brings us to Item Ten-A, Counselors' Bill Number Fifty-nine. Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number Fifty-nine on first reading, providing for a supplemental appropriation of funds from the State of Colorado Department of Human Services Behavioral Health Administration Co-Responders Service Program grant in the amount of $295,000 for the 2023 budget of the Police Department in the General Fund.
Counselor Emmons, second. Been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Fifty-nine. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Baker.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number Sixty. Counselor Emmons.
I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number Sixty on first reading, amending Sections Two-Dash-Fourteen-Dash-One of the Westminster Municipal Code concerning inclusivity board size.
Counselor Seymour.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Sixty. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I just quickly want to give some background to this for anybody who may be listening. So, this was brought to us from the actual inclusivity board. I was around when that board was increased in size, and what the board has found is it makes it difficult with that many people, plus they've had a lot of turnover, so they feel that they had a robust discussion around the size of the board, and they felt that this would make them more able to do business. So, just so the public understands why we're making that change.
Seeing no other comments, roll call, please.
Sorry. Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Sixty-one. Counselor Seymour.
I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number Sixty-one on first reading to amend Title Fourteen, Section Fourteen-Dash-Two-Dash-Two of the Westminster Municipal Code related to Employee Four-O-One-A Defined Contribution Plan.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Sixty-one. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Resolution Number Thirty-nine. Counselor Seymour.
I move to adopt Resolution Number Thirty-nine, revising the City Council's rules and regulations.
I didn't see who went first.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution Number Thirty-nine. Are there any further questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Item Ten-E. Counselor Seymour.
I think we need to do D-D-Two.
Yes, as Counselor Seymour points out, there, a second motion is proposed for the Code of Conduct.
Okay, I just thought it was a bullet point for, for the thing. Okay, go ahead.
New agenda.
Yes.
I move to approve the updated City Council Code of Conduct.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the updated City Council Code of Conduct. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
And Mayor McNally.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Item Ten-E. Counselor Seymour, or, I'm sorry, Emmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to sign the First Amendment, First Amendment Intergovernmental Agreement with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, doing business as Mile-High Flood District, to encumber an additional $225,000 of city funds for the preliminary design of improvements to the Shaw Heights Tributary, thus bringing the total city contribution towards this project to $400,000.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item Ten-E. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Mayor, or, I'm sorry, Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
And Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Item Ten-F. Counselor Seymour.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Dear Credit Inc. for the four-year rental of a worked-in asphalt milling machine in an amount not to exceed $121,879 per year, beginning in December of 2022 and continuing through November of 2025, and allow for a $20,000 contingency for the total authorized expenditure of $507,515.
Counselor Emmons, second. It's been moved and seconded to pass Item Ten-F. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker.
It'd have to go to 2026 to make four years. We've said four years, but we've only defined three.
Curfew Minor Street Operations Manager, just to clarify, we are paying this in the beginning, so the payment will take place in 2025. The lease extends to 2026.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour. The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Item Ten-G. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to sign a contract for legal services with Kissinger and Feldman PC, represent the city on sales and use tax matters.
Counselor Emmons, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Item Ten-G. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Baker.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Item Ten-H. Counselor Emmons.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Essencia Architecture LLC for additional architectural and design services for the swim and fitness center renovation project in the amount of $160,412, bringing the total contract amount